Good evening. Welcome to the 2018 Borough Council Candidate Forum. Before we begin, would you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Hello, I'm Freda Lazarus, President of the Pompton Lakes League of Women Voters. Our League of Women Voters began in 2007 and over the last 11 years, we have successfully sponsored these candidate forums, as well as conducting voter registration in the high school and in the public arena. The League is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages active and informed citizens and influences public policy, education, and advocacy. The League does not support or oppose any candidate or any party. Operating as a nonprofit on a voluntary basis, its work is financed by dues and donations. Pompton Lakes League meets the second Thursday of each month, and I would encourage you all to join us. The registration forms are over there, and I'm free to explain to you where we meet and what other initiatives we're taking this year. This evening, our moderator is Toni Zimmer. Toni is a resident of Sparta and has served as President of the New Jersey League of Women Voters, and currently is the Secretary of the League of Women Voters of the United States. In 2020, we will celebrate our 100th anniversary of the League. Joining her as our timekeepers are members of the League of Women Voters of Sussex Highland, Louise Bagney and Evelyn Furman. Thank you very much for coming. We're honored to have Toni to serve as our moderator. This forum is being videotaped by Long Shot Productions. Two unedited tapes will be available in its entirety and be delivered to Borough Hall for release. One tape will be made for broadcast format on Channel 77, our public access channel, and the other for the Pompton Lakes website. In addition, the video will be uploaded to the Pompton Lakes League of Women Voters Facebook for citizen review. Tonight, questions from the audience may be submitted by dropping them in the basket, and I will hand them to the moderator. Individuals from the Pompton Lakes League will also help with collecting them. If you have one that you want, raise your hand, and someone will come by and get them. Please remember to turn off your cell phone. Toni.
Thank you for coming tonight. It's my pleasure to introduce the candidates to you, and we're very grateful that they came out tonight. It's so good that everyone gets a chance to hear what they have to say and how they feel about certain issues. So, thank you, candidates, for coming tonight. It really does mean a lot. Now, before we begin, I'd just like to explain a little bit about the process. Before the debate started, we selected the positions of who would give their opening statements, first, second, third, fourth, and fifth, by pulling lots. And we did the same thing for the closing statements. So, the opening statements will be two minutes per candidate, and then we will go to the questions that you've submitted this evening, which there are quite a few, and they all look very, very good. So, we're going to have a full evening tonight. Each candidate will get one minute to answer each question, and they will be asked the same question. So, everything is standard, but you'll see how it works as we go along. If one candidate wants to comment on what another candidate says, they can raise their hand. I'll see them, and then we'll wait until everybody has a chance, and I'll go back to that candidate and say, "Now, you want us to make a comment?" And they can comment. And I think that's pretty much about it. We will have the closing statements, and there are two minutes as well. So, as far as the cellphone advisory is, I'm going to turn my own cell phone off. And I will, you know, you see their nameplates in front of them, so I'm just going to start. Are you ready? We're going to start with the opening statements, and Teri Riker will begin.
Is this on?
Whenever you're ready.
Good evening. I wanted to thank you for coming to hear your council candidates participate in this forum. My name is Teri Riker. Many of you know me, but for others, please let me take a moment to introduce myself. I am a wife. I've been married to Dr. Oscar Riker for nearly 45 years. I am a mother. I have three grown, married, and even employed children, a very good thing. I am a grandmother with five small grandchildren, even a better thing. Professionally, I'm an attorney and a weirdly mediated professor, and in my spare time, a novice bridge player. I am your council president. I have served as a councilwoman for nearly a decade. The Sarah Riker team was established when a dynamic dad, Mike Serra, who was passionate about recreational facilities for our youth, teamed up with a savvy lawyer, Teri Riker, a William Patterson professor, and a consummate community volunteer. We campaigned hard and unceeded two incumbents. We have been serving this borough ever since. Our initial goal was to touch all the residents of Pompton Lakes and work each and every day to make Cardinal County a wonderful place to live and a great place to raise a family. We continue to do that, but it was a kindergentle time. We were proud to serve our community, and we still are. Being a politician meant that we were acting for the betterment of our neighbors. National and statewide politics was not as divisive as it is today. Currently in the news, issues like climate change, immigration, abortion, and gay marriage are the lightning rods that need to divide us, but when it comes to electing your local council, these issues have absolutely no place. As you listen to the remarks tonight, I hope you will see that we have served all the Cardinals well, that we have done an admirable job, and that you will want to reelect Riker-Deline Palladore on November 6th. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Deline?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. My name is Eric Deline, and I am running for reelection for the Pompton Lakes Borough Council. It has been my great honor to serve this community for three years, and I said back in 2015, I would show leadership, be hands-on, and work hard to improve the quality of life for our residents. At the time, I spoke about my efforts for the development of the Morris Canal Greenway. Now, that path has been constructed, is being enjoyed by our residents, with some additional improvements on the way. I said then that I wanted to implement new technology and innovation initiatives. Within my first month on being on council, I established a committee where we developed a survey asking our residents what they wanted with a new website, research companies and ideas that worked to develop the easy-to-use and lively website we have today. With my background in urban planning, I expressed my knowledge of available grants and programs. I worked to acquire a grant from Sustainable Jersey to submit documentation so we will be recognized as a sustainable community, which will happen this fall. I acquired free assistance from the Department of Transportation to develop a plan to make our community safer and more enjoyable to walk and bike for our residents and children. As the Open Space Committee Chair, we started the Trails Maintenance Subcommittee, which has made continuous improvements to our trail system since it was opened in 2015 and keeps them in good condition today. I've been the floodwater liaison for the last two years, working with the board to identify opportunities to maintain our rivers, get important information for our residents, and improve the level of discount homeowners get from flood insurance. Outside of council, my family and I have been dedicated to Pompton Lakes. My wife is involved in the Lenox PTA. I coach soccer for the PRRSA. My daughter Serena, attending second grade at Lenox, is in Girl Scouts, plays soccer, T-ball, basketball, cheerleading, and whatever else she can get her hands on. Daniella started soccer this fall and loves walking with me on the trails. Whenever we have been able to, we have supported the great organizations in town because Pompton Lakes is our home. I ask you for your vote on Tuesday, November 6th. I've continually sought new ways to improve what Pompton Lakes offers our residents, and if elected, I will continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Shippa?
Hello, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this very important event and tradition. Thank you to the Republican candidates and club for participating in this exchange of ideas and for the time and commitment you give to your work. My name is Peter Shippa, and having grown up in northern New Jersey, I've been a Pompton Lakes resident since 2005 with my wife Erin. We have two amazing children in the Lincoln School System, and the day I learned, the principal moved his desk to the roof for a day because the kids met their reading goals. I was a believer in the quality of education they were receiving. I graduated from William Patterson University with a bachelor's in audio recording, and since then, I've become a computer technician, started and continue to own a small business since 2005, and become senior technician at a top-10 PR firm in New York City. I've been politically awake since the first Gulf War and have been active ever since. In 2016, I decided that my activism was best utilized within the Democratic Party. I have shown up and enthusiastically lent my voice towards change. I'm a jack-of-all-trades, and my superpower is recognizing structures and connections between seemingly unrelated things. I frequently sing the lyrics to different songs over what's playing, showing their similar chord structures. I've taken my experience waiting tables and bartending and reorganized my support staff department to work much more efficiently, and recognize our customer service role and what is otherwise a maintenance department function. And I recognize that to steer our country towards a better path, I need to look no further than my own backyard, to loosely quote Dorothy. My intent for council is not only provide checks and balance and sunshine, it is to find what's working in other towns and adapt them to fit ours, to work with our Democratic county representatives to bring more services and programs inside of Pompton Lakes. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Palladore?
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Palladore, and I've recently been appointed by the mayor to fill the vacated seat on council. I am a longtime resident of Pompton Lakes, graduating from Pompton Lakes High School in 1993. 25 years ago, I sat in the very seats that you sit in tonight, confident and ready for what my future had to offer. 25 years later, I returned to these seats yet again to watch my daughter graduate from the same high school I did. She graduated in 2018 as an honor student and varsity fencer, and in seven years, I will yet again return to these seats to watch my son with the same nervousness and excitement as he too graduates from Pompton Lakes, ready to conquer the world. But I will take comfort in knowing that with the closeness of this community, the hard work of previous council, and the excellence of our schools, they are prepared, both of them, for the challenges that life brings, just as I was prepared. Even before politics, I have always been very active in my community, volunteering for numerous committees on the Lenox School PTA, coaching rec soccer for the past three years, a proud and active member of the Pompton Lakes Women's Club, a member of the Pompton Lakes Elks Club, and for a brief period of time, serving as the alternate commissioner on the Shetree Commission. My community contributions are not contained just within the borders of Pompton Lakes, though, as I am also an active board member for the Burton County Habitat for Humanity Organization. As a councilwoman, I serve as a liaison for the rec committee, the library board, and the MUA. Professionally, I'm a financial advisor, and I've been with my firm for 15 years. I am also the former owner of a cafe catering company that I ran alone for six years. I believe that the experience and expertise that I have drawn from the corporate, nonprofit, and hospitality sectors will contribute to my ability to effectively continue to fill the role of councilwoman for the town of Pompton Lakes. Amongst the cornerstone beliefs that I bring to the table in everything I do are honesty, transparency, accessibility, and empathy, and I look forward to proving this to you as I continue to make myself available to our residents, ready to listen to your concerns, and open to exploring the new ideas that you have to keep our amazing community growing even stronger. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy Hinton?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Randall William Hinton the Fourth, also a lifelong resident. I graduated from these Howland Falls in 1971, and my son graduated in 2005. Most people know me as Randy, but I like using my full name. Like our wonderful town, Pompton Lakes, my name is about tradition. It's about making connections between the past, the present, and the future. Like Pompton, I'm a hard worker who's solidly middle-class. The people who have served this town, politicians, yes, but also scout leaders, civic servants, teachers, police, and fire departments, small business owners, are the backbone of the Cardinal traditions. I have lived in Pompton Lakes for over 60 years, and I honor and respect the work and love that has gone into making this town a gem. My job history includes many leadership positions in the Carpenters Union, and I'm proud that I had the opportunity to represent my fellow workers and work collaboratively with management. Since retired, I've focused on the environment, serving on the Open Space Committee and recently appointed to the Community Garden Committee, also a member of the Golden Ageers for the last three years. I've walked the streets of this town for the Shetree Commission the last six years. Maybe you've seen my blog on Facebook, it's Randy's Garden. As a lifelong conservationist, I share the community's concern about the geese and deer overpopulation. I support dealing with this issue using humane strategies for reducing geese and deer populations that have become a safety and hygiene problem, including increased risk of lyme disease. I regularly volunteer to reduce the geese population by adjuvants, and I have brought environmental experts into Pompton Lakes to address the deer overpopulation. One party has represented the governance of this town of Pompton Lakes for decades. Accountability gets lost when others sometimes opposing views aren't considered. Residents deserve a voice in decisions that affect Pompton Lakes, and this will happen when elected officials encourage input and listen to the citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming out tonight and giving us an opportunity to hear, to be heard. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for making this event possible. My name is Carmela Torciello. Yes, I have been known for 40-plus years in Pompton Lakes as Smilly Torciello, one of the same. In those years, I volunteered for many civic organizations, such as working for the Republican Mayor John Sterling to build a senior housing, still the only senior housing in town. I've been the leader and the chairwoman of Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Lenox, Lincoln, and Lenox IBTAs. With St. Mary's Church, I volunteered to establish the Youth Advisory Committee. I was the third woman elected to the Borough Council and the first woman elected council president. As councilwoman, I started the fireworks on Labor Day weekend, a nope for the taxpayers, and I give a lot of credit to the Recreation Commission to make this event bigger and better each year. In 1988, I was part of the mayor of council that notified the state and residents of our town about dune pine contamination. I was liaison to the seniors, the police department, DPW, Plaque Committee, Youth Advisory Committee, and the Recreation Committee. With my experience and involvement with so many civic organizations, I got to know our town inside and out, and understanding the issue that we face and the concern of our residents. Having worked with so many people, I see what haven't in that lack of bringing new ideas to the table could accomplish. Since the mayor and council have been from one party for so many years, I'm concerned that not all the residents are being represented. As a Democratic leader and a co-leader of the borough for over 30 years, I say, "Who better to represent Democrat idea and bring back the two-party system?" Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we start with the regular questioning, I would like to ask the candidates, which I didn't do before we started, if I may lose your first name when I'm addressing you. Okay. Thank you. Okay, there were several questions submitted about the deer problem. So, I would like to start with a question, and I'm just going to give you an overview of what people are concerned with. They're concerned about wondering if the fence requirements can be changed to protect the yards and the health, ticks, et cetera, and culling or birth control methods, the deer hunt, and just in general, what do you think you could do to resolve the issue? So, we'll start with Eric.
So, what is the actual question?
What are you going to do about the deer?
Okay. You know, we have to recognize that, you know, there is an overpopulation of deer, and I think, I think the question comes down to is if you're going to take a practical, realistic approach to addressing it, or you're going to utilize every worst-case scenario that somebody can come across related to, you know, children playing in the fields and getting lyme disease. The fact is, is that we're not the only community in North Jersey or New Jersey at all that's having an issue with overpopulation. So, dealing with this issue in isolation really doesn't address the issue at all. If anything, it needs to come from the state leadership, it needs to come from the state, it needs to come from the county. Within parks, places like Little Falls, they're all having deer issues. So, you know, again, having the deer, deer hound in isolation or addressing fencing things really doesn't solve the issue long-term, and we really need a holistic, regional approach to addressing the issue.
Thank you. Teri?
As we all know, we live in a highly developed suburban community. We are a populated area. I have significant safety concerns about the possibility of a deer hunt. Even in rural areas, when I lived in Pittsburgh, where they had annual sanctioned deer hunts with experienced hunters participating, they were not insignificant and sometimes fatal incidents every season. What harm would the deer causing? What harm would we gain? Balance, benefits, and the burdens. They may be annoying, maybe even expensive to treat, but not worth risking the safety of a single citizen in this town. They're eating the flowers, the plants, the foliage in our yards. Perhaps try to plant shrubbery that is not so appealing to them. Use deer repellent. The risk of a hunt is way too high. It would be unforgivable, unjustifiable if harm were to come to one of our residents by infanticity.
Thank you. Jennifer?
I have to agree in saying that we live in an area where we're surrounded by river towns that have woods and environments that are very accommodative to deer. So, unless we solve the problem all over, solving it in just our town doesn't really solve it. You know, I chose to stay there with my family because I like living in a small town, I like not living in a big city. With that may come the trade-off that we have a lot of wildlife. I personally, being a soccer coach and spending a lot of time on the field, am not an advocate of there being a mass culling of deer in a place where our children play. I think that as a community, we need to come together with other communities and find a more responsible way to solve this problem.
Thank you. Carmela?
Yes. I'd like to support, I would like to see the professionals come in and tell us exactly what we can do with the deers. We do have a problem. I mean, our gardens are all gone. I understand that the deers also have a problem. They're very angry, and they're very angry because all the trees have been taken there in our area and not hungry. So, they're going to eat anything that they can in your property. But the most important thing is the safety of the children, which will be the lyme disease, the children being among the deers. I don't know what the deers will do to the children, but they're little enough, you know it's going to be a danger on that. And really, that's the deal, is to get the professionals in with us, discuss what we can do for the deer, join the other towns, and do the best we can do to correct this issue.
Thank you. Randall?
This has been an issue of mine for the last three, four years. I brought this up to Maria Kent one time at the Environmental Protection Committee, and she allowed me to bring Dr. Emile DeVito, the PhD in ecology, and he spoke. And this is a problem not only statewide, but nationwide. I've spoken at the council meeting numerous times. I've asked the mayor if he can do something, and correctly, the mayor says, "If we do something alone and nobody else does it, it won't really solve the problem." And I agree with him. But we need to be, take a leadership role on this and then work with the other towns. The tick problem, the lyme disease problem is just too much. We need to protect our children on the soccer fields, and we need to protect landscapes that will be in disrepair. So, we have to address it, and we need to start the discussion. The mayor and council refuses to even have a discussion. When I pulled the experts in, they did not show up.
Thank you. Peter?
I think the other half of that story here is that the deer are also eating on the understory throughout the forest, and especially along the riverbanks, that's especially important since the soil erosion. Basically, put soil back into the rivers, which we are working so hard to dredge and to maintain and to keep the water flowing, so this is actually a flood issue as well. As well as up on the hill, you have erosion, your people's properties are starting to fall down the hill. Could potentially actually affect tronations on homes if they're close enough to that hill. And overall, I believe the Dr. Usfelder said that it was about, we had about 10 times the amount of the recommended deer population that a healthy environment would have. And I say healthy environment, meaning that you have too many deer, you start to encourage coyotes to come in, you start to encourage bears. By having a large deer population, it really truly affects everything else within the food chain. So, I do recommend, we're not willing to leave, we should be willing to leave, let's not wait for the rest of the state to act, let's take that first step ourselves.
Thank you. Okay, the next question is going to go to Teri. Now, we have a couple of questions on one topic, and very important one, actually, and it's about seniors.
About?
Seniors. So, I'm going to read both questions.
Okay.
All right? What programs or ideas do you have to improve the quality of life for seniors of Pompton Lakes? And what actions have you taken if you've been on council over the past three years for the senior citizens of Pompton Lakes regarding housing and senior center? So, for those of you who are not sitting, you can still answer the question on what you believe can be done.
Our senior population is growing. The demographics in Pompton Lakes are changing like they are in other towns. We have a very desirable senior housing unit facility in our community. There's long waiting lists. That facility has recently been updated with kitchen and bath renovations. We, as a council, are currently in talk with the county to bring new senior housing to Pompton Lakes. It's in the initial stages, but we are actively participating in increasing housing for our seniors. In addition, we have very active senior groups. We have many different groups. I have on occasion spoken to these groups in my area of expertise. I've been a speaker on bioethics, end of life, living wills, and post. One of the things, the two things that I would recommend that I would like to see going forward for our seniors, one is a senior advisory council, in which representatives from each of the senior groups, in fact, get together on a regular basis to share ideas, coordinate programs, and express concerns to the mayor and council. The other is to revisit the transportation needs of our seniors, whereas I think there are quite a few new opportunities that we have that we can bring something to them similar to the Dot the Ride program that exists in nearby communities.
Thank you. Jennifer?
So, I personally haven't addressed any of the issues or needs within the senior community as I'm new to the council, as I'm new to the council, but I am aware of the possibility of expanding the senior housing and the talks of the lists, the waiting list of the existing facility, those individuals possibly being given preferential treatment to access to the new facility, which I think is very proactive, and I support that. which I think is very proactive and I support that. I also support the possibility of expanding our shared services to include more benefits for the seniors. And I absolutely love the idea of an advisory board where representatives are able to speak the concerns and bring out ideas in which way we can, we can help benefit their community.
Thank you. Carmela?
Well, I have my power, but I am a senior.
Put that back because it's a desk.
Okay, can you, now, you can move it closer. Can you hear me now? Okay. I am the president of the seniors in Pompton Lakes. It's called the Golden Ages, the first seniors committee that was established in Pompton Lakes. I became the president and the concern with all the seniors is right now, they've been waiting a long, long time for a senior center. We're the only town in the state county that does not have a senior center. And all we get is, it's coming, it's coming. So the seniors says, they go on and on and they say, well, we're going to be dead before it's coming, but this is what we need. Now, we have a liaison from the mayor and council that's supposed to be going to all the seniors. We have St. Mary's seniors, we have the active seniors, and we have the Golden Ages. So the liaison that comes to these meetings should be bringing back to the mayor and council the concern that all the seniors have. But we, we do not have their representation, so it's not going anywhere. And that's what the seniors need right now. We did have a property way back in 88. Just stopping me off, continue later.
Okay, thank you. Randall?
Yes, we're looking for a senior center. We've been looking for it for the three years that I've been at Golden Age. And we hear nothing. I've been reporting back to the council because we have difficulty getting our liaison to come to our meeting. We would like to work harder to get that senior center developed. It was, it's been promised to us, promised to us. And the handout for councilman Delion and councilwoman Reicher, three years ago, they talked about a space for the seniors. And in these three years that have passed, we still have no new space. They have not been able to do anything for our seniors. Councilwoman Reicher did come by when she was running for surrogate and she explained her situation, running for surrogate position. And that was the last time, first time, the last time we've ever seen her. So I know that she'll respond and she should, but we need to have representation from the council come to our Golden Ages and we don't. Thank you.
Peter?
This would be an area that I would defer to my counterparts a little bit for their experience, but I do understand that in their conversations with our freecolders that the proposed building is not sufficient in space and/or parking. I really like the idea of, you know, the ride-sharing services and look at that as actually an opportunity for us to bring more job opportunities to local residents of Pompton Lakes. So I would be interested in working with transportation as a means of employment for our residents.
Okay, thank you. Eric?
Thank you. One of the things I mentioned, one of the things I mentioned earlier that I'm working on, finding new ways to make bicycling and walking safer, improving access to public transportation while also calming automobiles as known as complete streets. The AARP actually identifies complete streets as a critical strategy in maintaining senior mobility and independence and allowing them to age in place or stay in their community, which they, where they want to live. And according to AARP surveys, that is the overwhelming desire, is to be able to have independence, not be homeward, homebound, and to sustain their community. And some of the things I'm working on currently will help address that.
Okay, and Terry, you wanted to make a comment?
Several points I need to respond to. The first is which, I am a senior citizen. I will pull my Medicare card out of my purse if anyone challenges that. The second is I am not the liaison, the senior liaison. I'm not in a position, I do not have my list of liaisons, but I am not the liaison to the seniors. When I indicated that I have an expertise in bioethics, including living wills, post, et cetera, I have been visible in this community for many years and I am identified that way, even to the extent that yesterday, when I bore several days ago and I got my flu shot, the nurse said to me, I learned so much from your post presentation, I'm using it again, and I am identified that way. The fact that you heard me speak only once is really not accurate.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on to question three. There are two questions about the parking and the football field. So, let's do those. Independent of who owns the Hirschfield Park football field, what is your idea about how it could be repurposed after it moves to Lakeside? And how will parking be provided in residential areas for the new football field on Lakeside? So we'll start with Jennifer.
Okay, it's too early to tell what kind of a situation could potentially be created with parking amongst the streets at the new field, but I know that we are proactively working with the Board of Education on making sure that the residents are not inconvenienced anyway with parking. As I said, I'm not really sure what the specifics of that are yet. But as far as Hirschfield is considered, I was under the impression that there would be no new development down there because it is in a flood zone.
Okay, and just to follow up on that, there's even another question about parking, so we might as well put it in. Does downtown Pompton Lakes have enough parking? It doesn't need more or less?
As it stands right now, I feel that we have sufficient parking.
Okay. Carmela?
I'm for development, especially for the youth. The only thing I was not for is that all the residents in that area were not notified what's going on and they stated that they didn't have to notify them. Second thing, we asked at a meeting if there's enough parking. They said you will park in the streets, you will park wherever you can. You can park at this parking lot and they will bus you in, which is more fun to spend. So I don't understand what the purpose is that we're building. I know the purpose why we built in this field, but they're inconvenient, all the residents in that area. There's no parking, there's lights, the homes are right across the street, and still they're not notifying any of the residents in that area. So I disagree with that, not with building the field.
Randall?
Could we repeat the question?
Sure. All right, it's like actually a two-part. One is about the field.
At Lakeside?
Yeah, at Lakeside. And will parking be provided in the residential area? That was the first thing. And then independent of who owns Hirschfield Park football field, what is your idea about how it could be repurposed after it moves to Lakeside? So it's like parking and what are you going to use the field?
Well, the logistics of the Lakeside school area and that field that they're putting in, the people are going to park on the street. I mean, you could put parking in here behind the high school and their talk of busing the people to the game. But most people are just going to park in the streets, which is going to be an inconvenience for all the residents there. I don't think there was much thinking going on when they decided to do that. Now also, for the track team, we haven't had a track team in Pompton Lakes for a long time because the track and field is not up to the standards. So while all the track needs are an away meet, possibly you could redo the field down at Hirschfield and put in an up-to-date track field. There's a possible use for that. I mean, there's enough parking there for that. But just like Millie had said, there was between the lighting and the noise. Residential everything. I guess that stopped, need to stop so that the microphone jumped ahead.
All right, Peter, you're good.
I agree that not enough foreplanting was done to accommodate parking before the ground was broken. I also understand that development on the new football field has been delayed because they then realized that the electrical wires needed to be laid underground before the field could be put up. As far as Hirschfield goes, I actually really like the idea of expanding a track. Actually, I've been talking to people, they've been, it's been a theme a little bit I've been hearing is that more people are interested in develop, more developed tracked facilities in our town. But I also think if we have that open space, I know, I know some have been wanting more planting of trees and other things to help mitigate flooding and I think if we're going to have these in open park, that if there's not a better use for it, that that might actually be a very good use for it. Apparently the trees will suck up a lot of water and maintain it and hold it. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric?
I, I think we should be engaged by asking the Board of Ed what they want to do with their property. I mean, it is their property. You know, we can share some ideas. We work closely, I think, a lot of times with the Board of Education and coordinate things, but ultimately how they choose to utilize Hirschfield Park is their decision, whether they use it for track. They've already expressed the interest to continue to have JV games down there. Do practices will continue down there. So they've got plans for it, they're utilizing it regardless of what somebody that is on the council or may be on the council someday thinks about it. Regarding parking, you know, we're talking about five, six games a year that we're going to have a parking issue relates to that. And that's the same thing that places like, people that live on Albany Avenue have to deal with, those same five to six games. We figured out, we live with it, we can address it, but those five to six days that we have to deal with it, and again, not will react to the worst-case scenario every time somebody comes up with an idea that's like the worst thing that's ever going to happen.
Thank you. Terry?
I'm going to take my time to address the second part of your question, and that was parking in downtown. Parking in downtown is viewed in many stages. As many of you know, we are in the process of exploring extensive redevelopment in town. We have hired experts, parking experts, have gone to numerous meetings at which we are assured that currently our parking is adequate. As we redevelop in short-term, we will do shared parking, we will do restriping, we will do repaving. And if we ultimately have the redevelopment that we anticipate, then there will be some serious planning towards an actual parking structure. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
It said the Board of Education owns their building. We own the building. We're the highest paid, we pay most of the taxes to the Board of Education. So the Board of Education has not owned it. If we don't give our taxes to them, they couldn't do anything. They couldn't do the education, they couldn't build anything. So I think it was fair that all the residents in that area should have been informed what the plans are and what they're going to do and how they're going to do it. So that's the issue, answers to the residents that pay the taxes.
Eric, what do you respond?
Yeah, I mean, I get the idea that we're all taxpayers and we all have a stake in what goes on in our community, but I mean, we operate and represent the government. We elect our Board of Education trustees. We say, okay, we've elected you for the next 30 years to make decisions on behalf of the Board of Education, the property that the Board of Education controls. I mean, we would all like to have a say in everything, but, you know, we don't work that way. And ultimately, you know, the Board of Education did what they were required to do. The community, many people in the community knew about it. If you didn't know about it, you didn't, then, you know, you might not be the most connected person. So, you know, they could have done things better, but at the end of the day, it's still their decision to make and it's not the individual decision. You want to vote for somebody else for Board of Education, vote for it, but ultimately, you know, it's still their decision.
Thank you. Randall?
Yeah, I just want to say that the comment was weighed about possibly six games, a football game. But I mean, there's going to be other games. There's going to be soccer games there, there's going to be lacrosse games now. So there's going to be other games that are going to want to play on that field and possibly some of them will be played any evening. And where noise and light pollution can really affect the neighbors.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'm going to go now to... What? Pardon me?
I'd like, I...
No, I'm sorry. Write it down and hand it up to me, please. You're not part of the campaign.
I understand.
I'm sorry, sir. I'm sorry.
There's no minutes for...
Excuse me, sir. Okay, the next question will go to Carmela. What letter grade would you give DuPont for their cleanup efforts? And where should they focus next?
Well, from day one, when we discovered we had contamination in this town and we said they should clean the site before they clean anything else. And obviously they did not clean the site 100%, so we keep getting contamination in this town. So I would probably give maybe 50 or 60%. They have a lot of work to do to really clean this town. I don't know if it could be done, but they should concentrate more to, to help the residents.
Thank you. Randall?
That's not really my expertise as to really judging what they've done and how well they've done it. I would, I would give them a C+. I mean, they are spending millions of dollars in cleaning up our town. I'd give them a C+. It's not my expertise.
Peter?
I'll echo that, but I do have a, an ill feeling towards their delay tactics that it took really decades for anything to happen and many years of misleading the public. And it wasn't just our town, I mean, that's actually been the story all across America. You can find thousands of examples of poor corporations just, you know, totally decimated an area where they massively profited from. So, what they're doing now is okay, they can do much better. We really should be, I think we should be doing a hell of a lot more to, to get them to provide insurance for the people that they're doing scientific experiments in their backyard flushing water through the aquifer. I, I think it's more than fair that they give a huge sense of security to the people that they're, they're experimenting with their properties.
Okay, thank you. Eric?
Well, my governor doesn't get letter grades anymore. They get satisfactory needs improvement and something else that could go with this. But, you know, I think, I think DuPont has done well in some things and needs improvement in others perhaps. You know, we, you know, the commissioner of DEP was here and I was, I was one of the people that was invited to that meeting and I spoke very succinctly about, actually exactly what Pete had mentioned, that the property owners that would be affected by the hydroglow flushing should have some kind of property protection. It's not too much to ask, I think, for some insurance. I mean, that's why we have insurance for, for that kind of scenario. On the actual site, you know, progress to me just isn't happening fast enough. I, you know, we want to return that property back to some economic use. We can do some things. It's got to be done right and I understand that that's part of the process, but, you know, we all, all hope to see that, you know, work, work getting done a lot quicker on the DuPont site.
Thank you. Terry?
When it comes to DuPont, there are many factors. You have the cleanup of the site, you have the cleanup of the plume, you have the barber, dry pilot that others have spoken about. But in terms of the thing that has actually started, had gone from start to finish is the most recent lake remediation project, which in fact, over $40 million was spent. At that point, you had a cleanup that started in May 2016 and successfully cleaned up in August 2018. We were left with a much better area in terms of Rotary Park, in terms of our benches, in terms of our trees, in terms of our walkways. And the goal of removing the mercury, the lead, the arsenic, the selenium, and the copper was in fact established. In a minute, I think that's really all I can, I can address. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer?
I too would have to say somewhere in the middle, I would also give them a C. I think that the work that has been done to date, the lake remediation, was done in a reasonable amount of time. I do think that Rotary Park looks beautiful. But I too agree with the rest of the candidates that it took too long to get to this point and we still... and we still have a ways to go. So if I were to be asked again in a year, I would hope, think that I would have a reason to maybe assign a C+ because I know we have a way to go, and I'm curious to see what the next steps of that pilot are going to be.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, we'll go to Randall. Randall, what would you do to change Pompkin Lakes for the better? And, I know, and why are there no records of the Board of Ed on the websites? The Board of Ed minutes or the records on the website?
The Board of Ed minutes on the website, on the Publican Lakes Council website, well, that's two, two different entities. And I have no control on that. And what would I do to make Pompkin Lakes better? Well, redevelopment is in the right direction. I don't agree with how high some of the buildings are going to be. Parking is a big issue in the town, and we have to work on something with the deer situation because it's a, you have to look at the entire picture. We, it is, it leans towards a flood issue because the understory has been devastated, and I would work diligently towards that. We have to, landscapes are being destroyed on people's yards and houses, and there's just a danger for the text, to the children playing on soccer fields and baseball fields. One of, one of the few things that I would work to is make Pompkin a better place.
Okay. Peter?
As the owner of Artastic expressed in a conversation, basically saying that, you know, the rent's too damn high, goes down to it. I think a lot of that, part of that is, is the bid bucks tax that goes into the rentals. And I actually, this, this mechanism that I'm developing, I would use in a variety of ways, but I'd actually like to use the pilot program that currently exists for our redevelopment with the, with the landlords. I'd actually like to use a pilot program for residents and pilot programs for small business owners that, that own their businesses as well. I'd like to really stimulate entrepreneurial spirit in, in the stores downtown and get Pompkin Lakes working again. Feel free to come and ask me what I mean by the pilot program. It's a little much to go.
Thank you. Eric?
I, I think I'd like to continue doing some of the things I've already been doing. You know, I, I've, you know, when I moved to Pompkin Lakes, I joined the Open Space Committees, and I've been on the committee since 2007. Since then, you know, we've made numerous improvements to the parks. We've had the Morris Canal Greenway constructed. You know, one of the things that we're looking at are improvement to our rural field complex, improving, you know, improving safety in that complex, adding more recreational opportunities for our youth. We're looking at, you know, improving Lakeside Avenue, building off of what, what had been done at Lake, at Lakeside Park and continuing that all the way to the bridge. That is in our open space plan. That's some of the things that we've talked about and want to continue to do in open space, and I really do think that those, those kinds of things will enhance the community.
Okay, thank you. Terry?
Many of my energies on the council have been devoted to the redevelopment effort. We in Pompkin are very lucky to have a traditional downtown, but that downtown, like others, has suffered because of the expansion years ago of the malls and now the increasing presence of the online shopping. The mayor and council took the initiative and formed a redevelopment agency. We are sanctioned by the state, and we were determined to do that in order to do redevelopment correctly. We also, through that agency, have hired an executive director who was very much involved in the Morris Town redevelopment. We are going forward with our pilots. Pilots are payments in lieu of taxes. These pilots can be very powerful means to stabilize our tax base. And what you're going to see is that we've had, we've approved at this point three pilots, two of which are for smaller redevelopment, and the other is for the large, the first large one that is coming soon. Thank you.
Jennifer?
I can't believe someone thinks we can actually make Pompkin Lakes better. It's kind of awesome the way it is. We have one of the greatest sense of community spirit in this town. Our national night out is amazing. We have the holiday stroll, probably one of the best firework displays around at the end of the summer. How do we make Pompkin Lakes better? We make sure that we keep the leadership in place that we know is going to act as advocates for the community to continue to keep some of these programs happening. Personally, I'm very excited about redevelopment. I can't wait for a holiday stroll when our storefronts are bustling and the streets are filled with people. People come from all over to come to some of these events in our town.
Carmela?
Yes, well, I agree with that. No improvement in Pompkin Lakes, but it is improvement in the look of our town. If you look around, you can use, there's homes that need to be fixed, there's sidewalks that need to be fixed, there's streets that need to be fixed, and it's just the look of it. We need to upgrade and a facelift in our town, and that's really the improvement. I agree with the pilots, we have great programs in our town. We, we could improve more, more programs, but I think the look of our town is the best, the best thing. The next thing, I have to get myself elected so I can vote on it.
Okay, Peter, you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I'd actually just like to expand on the pilot program. I agree with Terry that pilots are a very powerful program, and I think they can be used in other ways. So real quick, payment in lieu of taxes, how it works is you pay a set fee as opposed to value-based property taxes over a period of time, sometimes it's 20 or 30 years. But what I think we can do is we can have individual contracts with people who have beneficial things to give to the town. So say for bid bucks, if we offer to pay some of these small businesses bid bucks for their rent, we can actually say, okay, you can pay a little bit less in the property taxes of that owner, and then therefore, the town would actually give you 90% of that money as opposed to the normal 30% they give in property taxes.
Eric?
First of all, related pilots, we can't just create new pilot programs. I mean, it's, it's, it's a program derived from the state. We just don't get to create new financial incentives. I mean, everything that we're able to do at the municipal level gets, comes down from the state. We don't, we just don't create things. Second, to Millie's point about upgrading the downtown and things like that, I think, I warn people not to have a short memory. Go back and think about what the town looked like back in 2007, 2008. Pompkin Plaza, Ray Baruchia, Max, there's so many buildings. If you go back and look from even 10 years ago, how much the business improvement has done to improve the facades on, on it. It has been a great program, it's been worthwhile, and we are definitely reaping the benefits because redevelopment wants to come in and they want to do business in Pompkin Lakes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Did I go that? Okay, wait a minute.
Just a quick clarification. I'm, I'm very happy that you concur that pilots are a very powerful thing. However, what, what we need, I echo what Eric said, but what we need to realize, just in terms of the numbers that you presented, traditionally, our budget is that we only get 20% of the, of the, approximately 20% of the municipal tax, it's not 30%. And the pilot would in fact, generally speaking, keep 95% in the borough. None.
Carmela, let's go to something else after this.
Okay. Actually, my memory is very good, very old. So thank you very much. I, I remember the Blue Town, I remember when it caught fire. It was busy as anything then in Wantagio Avenue. I had three businesses downtown as a businesswoman. I know the Chamber worked very hard to keep this downtown alive, and they did. The fire was unfortunate, and luckily, the owner makes that place very nice, and that's, that's really what it is. It's nothing they, Mayor and Council did, it's the owner of the property that developed that.
Okay. All right. This is a question that can kind of ride on the map net. It actually just says, but what about the people in DuPont who are suffering daily? Beautification is not making their health better. Would you like to comment on that, Peter?
Yeah, I'd like to raise that. I'd like to bring whatever interest I can find, I'd like to county, I'd like to partner with the county, I'd like to partner with the state. I'd like to figure out where compensation was not given that is due, where restitution needs to be made. It's a huge issue, and I can't, I can't even say that I can wrap my brain around it. Again, it's been going on for decades. And so some people that were paid out have left, and other people that were there have gotten to be sick. A lot of these things were to improve. So I would take my time and be thorough, and I would talk to whoever I need to talk to to figure out what needs to be done.
Thank you. Eric?
Anyone, anyone dealing with health issues, you know, you really have, have to empathize with them. My, my father died of cancer a couple of years ago, so you know, anybody going through those kind of issues, I understand. You know, but we, at the same time, you know, we've had the health experts come down, and they've found, you know, very limited ties to what has gone on, you know, as a result. You know, you know, high, high incidence of non-Hodgkin's disease for some genders, kidney disease for other genders. They did a, a study of the surrounding towns, five towns around Pompkin Lakes. In some cases, you know, Pompkin Lakes had lower incidences of some of the health issues that we're concerned about. You know, again, we can't go off of the worst-case scenario, we can't overreact, we have to take a real, you know, realistic approach to what's going on. And you know, the stories, it breaks your heart, you know, but there are experts, the EPA and the DEP are leading the cleanup, and we have to follow their guidance on the cleanup of DuPont and the surrounding issues related to it.
Thank you. Terry?
There are so many issues regarding the health and the claims that we have in Pompkin Lakes. We as a council, I've participated for approximately nine years, have participated with numerous representatives from public health venues, from studies, from the NJDEP, from the EPA, that although we have anecdotal evidence and our heart goes out to those people in our community who are suffering, the evidence that we have Pompkin Lakes juxtapositioned to other communities at this point is anecdotal. And we are in a position to try to reach out to those, especially those in the public health area. Could you try to give us some, some better guidance?
Jennifer?
I think that that question makes a powerful statement to have to express that you're suffering or in any way you feel that the beautification of something doesn't justify is accurate. Anyone that is in pain or is suffering a health issue, of course, they won't feel justified by bushes and trees and a prettier lakefront. But without having as much knowledge on the subject, be able to speak to whether or not there are issues in that area stemming from DuPont, I have to defer to the scientific and medical evidence that I've seen. But again, not having a sufficient amount of that, it is an area I would be interested in learning more about.
Carmela?
Yes, thank you. We're going back when the first contamination started, they, DuPont gave a lot of money to a lot of residents that actually unfortunately happened and passed away from cancer or other brain tumor and so on. But they did get the, the money to, they didn't do any good. Okay, the money is not good. The, the issue is here that we have to constantly stay on DuPont to research and find out why this contamination cannot be controlled. And that's really what we need to do. We can go higher, we can go DEP, we can go to the state, we can go national, we can go anywhere to find out to help these people that are all still suffering from this contamination.
Randall?
Yeah, we're talking about the health of the residents in the Hummer area. Back in March 17th, 2016, this mayor and council, along, signed by Eric Delain and Terry Reicher, sent a letter to the county. When the county wanted to get involved, I'll agree, the county was very late to the show. But they did want to put in county funds, of which Pompkin Lakes is one of 16 towns in the county. They wanted to spend $60,000, and this mayor and council sent a letter to them and said that they found the timing of such a decision to be bizarre and your approach to be disrespectful. "We request that the Pasey County suspend any attempt to retain any professional service or spend any money associated with this matter. We find it an extreme abuse of county power and a waste of tax money for the freeholders to even consider spending any sum of money to inform themselves on this matter." They were willing to spend the money. We were only, 16 communities, we're only one of 16.
Thank you. Eric, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I did sign that letter, and I stand by that letter today. The fact is, is that the county has no jurisdiction in Pompkin Lakes related to the DuPont cleanup. All they were looking for was an opportunity to benefit off of what was going on in DuPont. That's all it came down to. Terry Duffy has been a freeholder for that long, as he was the freeholder leader at the time. TJ Best, everybody who's been, these freeholders have known what's going on for years and years and years. Randy's right, they are basically, and you know, we don't have, we don't need another person in the process to lay in what's going on. We have to address the issue as they are. EPA and DEP are the responsible entities, are leading the way through our, through the federal and state jurisdictions, and ultimately, the county just interjects in that issue.
All right, thank you. Okay, we'll start with you, Eric. Current plans for new housing should add to the tax base. However, what do you recommend to lessen the tax burden of Pompkin Lake residents?
I mean, that's, that kind of goes back to redevelopment and payment in lieu of taxes. I mean, again, the municipality's ability to, to generate revenue is pretty limited to property taxes. Pilots enable us to provide a financial incentive to developers that would not otherwise be purchasing property and investing in, in certain areas. That allows us to be able to stabilize our tax base as a result of that investment, all those improvements that are going on. So you know, what Morris Town has done to revitalize their community, what Ridgewood is doing, what Montclair has done, what Cranford and Westfield and all these communities that everybody talks about, that they love, that's exactly what Pompkin Lakes is doing. Now, we've got some economic issues that, you know, have slowed things down, but we're starting to see that progress, and that's, that's the direction that we've taken, and that's the strategy that we'll take. And we should, we should continue to do that strategy, and that directly addresses the issue related to property taxes and the budget.
Thank you. Terry?
I, I don't mean to be repetitive, but the reason that I stay on council and the reason that I'm so passionate about redevelopment is that it's the pilots that give us that additional tax pop that we so desperately need in our community. We know our community has, has taken down many houses during those homes that were, that were removed. We lost approximately $500,000 worth of ratables on an annual basis. In a town that's fully developed, it is hard to get that tax money back. It is the pilots that we are seeking through redevelopment that in fact will do it big picture. On a much smaller plane, we have through shared services some revenue generators. We have in fact done some shared services where we take our folks and, and in fact, use them to generate some money for the town. But pilots is the answer.
Jennifer?
So being new to the council, I have to commend the council that has been in place long before me in saying that in losing the ratables with the homes that were taken down and exploring an opportunity such as the pilot is commendable. I, I look forward to working with them in the future on that. That being said, this is New Jersey, so realistically, you know, we can't expect that we would ever do anything that would reduce taxes. I think our goal is to stabilize them. And as Terry is about to, to discuss with you, we do explore shared services, both in the sense where our 911 acts as the dispatch for other towns, which is a revenue generator, as well as the services that we share with other municipalities such as animal control, the... the street sweeper, and assorted other things. That may not be a revenue generator, but it is a dollar saver because if we had those services to ourselves, it would be much more expensive.
Thank you. Carmella.
Yes, the pilot program, I know Councilwoman Terry went for a seminar to find out what this pilot program really is. The way I understand the pilot program, if you put a building in Wantague Avenue and if you do not rent that building, they don't have to pay taxes until it's completely full. And that is my understanding to pilots. So in other words, if we have 30 years and we're giving this builder to pay taxes and he doesn't fill these apartments within a year, we don't see any tax ratables to come to the town. So I agree with building, I don't agree with five stories. We don't have enough parking for all these buildings and all these people to park. But I understand the pilot program is that unless the building is fully rented, we do not get any tax ratables.
Thank you. Randall.
Could you repeat the question?
Sure. Current plans for new housing should add to the tax base. However, what do you recommend to lessen the tax burden on Pompton Lakes residents?
As Terry was saying, there was a Pompton Lakes 2017 budget paper that I picked up at a council meeting that I was at. And it said this year, our loss was some $889,000, like those 2008 onward, once again, we've been impacted by this loss of ratable base. I agree with redevelopment to bring in tax ratables. And like I talked with Millie, I don't agree with buildings being five stories. We have to find parking spaces. One proposed is short 131 parking spaces is why that project is not going on. It's a big problem that we have to address, you know? And we just have to keep working on it.
Okay.
I'd like to again thank Eric and Terry for endorsing the pilot program. I love the pilot program and I think we should be using it for residential housing. I think as one who has had his own flood insurance go up from $1,000 to $5,000 in the short course of three years, I would love it if the town would offer me a contract where they help subsidize my flood insurance and in return, the money that I do pay for taxes, they get 90% of as opposed to, I'm sorry, Terry, was it 25% that you corrected me on? Also, other things we can do is, again, small businesses, we can help anyone who wants to do an improvement on their house, whether it's a small business that owns a building or whether it's a residential house, if they are willing to do a substantial improvement upon their house that is proven by board certification to increase the value of their home, that they be able to enter into a pilot program with the town so that they could use some of that money towards funding their addition of their house.
Okay.
It's actually a little more than a program, but it's all I have time for.
Thank you. All right, Terry. What is Pompton Lakes doing to address the affordable housing obligation?
When people talk about the affordable housing obligation, they're going back to a famous New Jersey Supreme Court case referred to as Mount Laurel. From the Mount Laurel case, you have what's called COA, which is an obligation for folks, communities, who in fact are building, to allocate certain amounts of space, certain amounts of residence to affordable housing. We in the mayor and council have taken the initiative to reach out, hire an expert, deal with the county, so that as we negotiate our pilots with the redevelopers, we are in a position to know exactly what our COA fair housing obligation is, so that this is an inducement in fact to the developers to go forward in our town. So we have really taken the initiative to make sure we are absolutely on top of this going forward.
Thank you. Jennifer.
Having come late to the pilot discussions as far as being a member of the council is concerned, I commend our sitting council for being proactive in working with the developers to make sure that we fulfill our requirement. So I think that that in itself is admirable.
Okay, Carmella.
I agree with that question. We do need the affordable. I know we have senior housing that has affordable. Also, we can use an adult community, which would be taxed for the new for the town, and also would be the affordable housing with that. So I would be willing to look into that, to look further. I know the freeholders are building for the vets, which is probably going to be the affordable act there. So I know what's going on and I know what they're building, so I would be supportive to do whatever we need to do for Pompton Lakes.
Thank you. Randall.
Yeah, I think through redevelopment program that we've had for going on a few years now, I think that everybody working with that has been going in the right direction. Through redevelopment, affordable housing will be in that. And I'm in agreement with what we've been doing right along. So I think the town and the council and the people involved in redevelopment have been doing a very good job.
Peter.
Yeah, I don't know enough to comment on the topic about like affordable housing. I believe we should have it. I'll work towards it. But I believe we're probably doing the right thing at the moment.
Okay. And Eric.
Thank you. Planning for affordable housing is actually one of some of the things I do in my professional career. And the communities I work with would prefer not to have huge and unrealistic numbers shoved down their throat, but in Pompton Lakes, we've been very proactive in addressing affordable housing. We've worked with the courts to require a certain percentage of affordable housing for new developments in downtown while ensuring that there's still an incentive to actually build downtown. We are working with Passaic County to build new affordable senior and veteran housing where the Passaic County garage is currently located. They're actually looking at moving to Upper 20th Creek Lane and this housing would replace that. That building will also include social services and other senior programs hosted right here in Pompton Lakes. And we're actually working, we're advocating that Pompton Lakes residents will get first priority for the senior housing.
Thank you. Terry.
I started the question. I was the one who gave you the Mount Laurel update.
Okay, Jennifer. Next question. Many flood zone residents are facing severe increases in their flood insurance. What would you do to help these citizens?
I think our flood advisory board has done an amazing job putting the initiatives in place that we need to do to maintain our CRS rating, which has allowed some of these residents to have a discount on their flood insurance. I think actually, and I currently from now on, we have one of the highest ratings in the state.
Ben said the lowest rating.
Low, sorry. Most favorable rating. So I know that that team works very hard to make sure that we check all those boxes and I think we're doing a very good job doing what we can to keep that close down for our residents.
Thank you. Carmella.
I agree with that. The committee is doing a great job. We just, maybe we need to get the percentage up a little bit for these people because they're doubling or tripling their payment for their flood insurance. I know people went up to $5,000, I know people that went up to $7,000, $8,000 dollars, and it's just too much. They just can't afford that. So I mean, we need to up our percentage so we can get more percentage to these people to get lower their insurance.
Randall.
No, I'm in agreement with the flood advisory board has been doing an excellent job and the CRS system has given a lot of financial breaks to a lot of these people in the south end of town. I just continue to work on all the work that we've been doing, the direction we've been going, and just continue the work that we've been doing. I'd like to be a part of that.
Thank you. Peter.
I think we should use the pilot program to pay the flood insurance premiums to these people. Because, you know, let's say $10,000 property taxes, if the town paid the $5,000 for the flood insurance at a pilot program rate of 95, you'd still get, what is it, sort of 45 cents as opposed to 25 cents. You get 45 cents of 50 as opposed to 25 cents of a dollar. I think it makes good sense. It maintains the housing values of the houses in the flood zone so that really, what is it, what do we, a third of our town is in the flood zone? I mean, basically, in like one foul swoop, you're raising the values of these homes down there.
Eric.
I've been the flood board liaison for the last two years and it's really amazing to see not only just how the flood board, how much energy they put into addressing the issue related to flooding and flood insurance and things like that. I mean, they were on the front lines when the maps, the FEMA maps were getting revised. They pay attention to federal legislation that is being considered. You know, it's more than just going after and decreasing our CRS number. We're one of the highest, highest being Better, rated east of the Mississippi as a riverine community. Only coastal communities have Better. And we've actually authorized, last year the council authorized a study by records that would actually help act as a watershed management plan. And that would actually enable us to move to another category and move from 25% on our flood insurance premiums to 30%. And it's hard work to maintain a percentage and it's going to be even harder work to get that number down, but I know the flood advisory board is behind it and I know the mayor and council have worked hard to support that.
Okay, thank you. Terry.
Just a few points of clarification. The community rating system is the rating that we get that controls the insurance that you pay for your flood insurance premiums. We as a community are level five. As Eric indicated, that is very rarefied air. We get the level five through a combination of financial contributions and sweat equity. Financial, what I mean is we clean the catch bases, we clean the rivers, we de-snag, we de-silt. We also have bought out the properties that I have mentioned. In addition, the sweat equity is our river cleanups, our community information sessions, the information in our calendars. In addition to that, one of the key points you need to realize is that the flood insurance discounts that you're entitled to from our level five will not automatically be given to you. That you need to be aggressive and assertive with your insurance agents and make sure they realize that we are a level five community.
Thank you, Terry. Okay, Carmella, this question, we'll start with you. What volunteer service do you participate in, both for the town and outside of town? What is the last volunteer or community service you've actively participated in, other than a political event?
I'm a resident of the Golden Ageers in town. I run that. Along to the WE Do, which is county-wide, what it is is women in power. It's not political. Anyone can be there, can be Democrat, Republican, whatever they can, and we just support the women. And that's a major thing for me that I support right now. What else do I do? Well, not politically, is that what you said? Not political? Well, I support the church. I go to the church. I volunteer for a lot of things in the church. I support my grandchildren with their Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and things like that. So I still support that. I'm way, way back with my children and now I have my grandchildren and I follow the same ways I did years ago.
Thank you. Randall.
Well, I've been on the Shetree Commission now for six years. Through my background as a construction worker, I've pretty much taken the lead on all removals, prunings, and I've passed on the plantings to Madeline Denty and she's doing an excellent job. In the last six years, we've removed between 800 and 900 trees now in the town. And through these storms that came through, just like last night, we've had no power outages. I've talked to police, I've talked to fire. Before that, they were having a lot of power outages and trouble. So I'm very proud of my service. We've been complimented, our Shetree Commission, from the mayor and council for the work that we've done, and it's all voluntary. It's all voluntary. I've been with the Golden Ageers for three years now and I enjoy working on that. Community garden committee with Eric, he asked me to be on it, and we get to get that going. Open space, I've been on for a good three years now.
Thank you. Peter.
Years ago, for a year, when my son played soccer, I coached kindergarten soccer. He stopped him, that's why I stopped him. But I've been involved with Boy Scouts ever since and I've volunteered for a lot of different activities with that. Also, I was briefly on the technology committee, but Boy Scouts got, it was a conflict for that, so unfortunately I had to hand, because I really liked that actually. I also volunteer on and off and sometimes including more with the trail maintenance committee, and that is cleaning up, actually just recently, we had the river cleanup, which I participated in, and I like that stuff as well.
Thank you. Excuse me. Eric.
Well, as I mentioned before, I'm a soccer coach and I probably followed that up, but I know nothing about soccer at all. But what I do know is I enjoy working with the kids and teaching them some enthusiasm for the game, having fun, you know, down at the field. So, you know, my daughter's down there, I really enjoyed my time there. You know, going to the back to the trails committee, I'm the liaison to open space, so it's, in some respects, a parlor parcel of the job. But at the same time, you know, councilman Bennett and I, you know, spend our summers, sweating our tails off, weed whacking through those trails when they're overgrown. I mean, I don't think that there's, you know, any council description that requires you to do those kind of things. So it's a labor of love and it's just another one of those things I enjoy improving the community.
Terry.
I'm a consummate volunteer. Locally in Pompton Lakes, I'm an active member of our Women's Club. Professionally, in terms of the legal profession in the county, I have volunteered to be part of the fee arbitration committee, which is a very tough position to hold. Statewide, I'm the past president of the Justice Marie Garrawalde Inn of Court. During my leadership of that inn, we were in fact designated as a platinum inn of court, at which time we were honored by being invited to the US Supreme Court. Clarence Thomas, one year was my host, Justice Ginsburg was my host the other year. Local, in addition, I have served the children community on many, many boards. Currently, my most active volunteer is as a bioethics attorney, where I've served for over 15 years, advising them on living wills, pulse, and lots of end-of-life decision-making.
Thank you. Jennifer.
Outside of the community, I am a board member for Burton County Habitat for Humanity, and I don't just go to board meetings, I actually do spend time on active construction sites working. I like to see the work that actually gets done, not just the decisions that get made. Habitat also has a committee called the Women Build Committee, to which I am a committee member. They work on initiatives and programs throughout the year that help with the betterment of women, whether it be through educating them on how to do simple repairs on a car, how to do simple repairs around a home, self-defense classes, things of that nature. I also am an active member of our Women's Club, which does numerous things throughout our community, whether it be decorating for Halloween parties at the center over here in Wantague, making breast cancer pillows for patients at Children, or home baking cookies and packing them up to the food center in Patterson. I'm a sister for the Passaic Valley chapter of Seroptimus International, which is very much like our Women's Club, but on a county level. I'm an elk, which does a lot of work for our veterans and disabled children, and also I'm on the PTA and I go soccer.
Now, Jennifer, speaking of Halloween parties, I have a question. Randall, you're invited to a Halloween costume party and you have to come dressed as a well-known superhero. Who would you come as and why?
As a superhero? As a superhero? I don't think that I'm a superhero. I would come as Daniel Boon. I like to be outdoors, I like to work in the environment. Oh, he's just not a superhero. He's a superhero in my eyes. So, but it's okay. He's a superhero in my eyes. And that's what I would come as. I love the environment and I love working outside. And that's been my whole career, working outside. And that's who I would come as. Sorry if he's not a superhero.
Okay. Peter.
I would be Captain Hades, just so I could walk around saying I'm Captain Hades all night. I could riff on that for quite some time.
Okay.
I'll try to get, I was getting in track. I would choose Spider-Man. That's an easy one for me. He's, he's a little brash, he's very irreverent, but he's always trying to do the right thing. So, you know, I am actually wearing Spider-Man socks too. Because I knew this was going to be a question, so I headed to that.
Thank you, Terry.
The obvious answer is Wonder Woman, because now more than ever, it's important for strong and independent women to run for elected office and take positions of leadership in all aspects of life. But frankly, I don't want to be caught in a Wonder Woman costume. So I think I would rather be a new co-superhero, which is the notorious RBG. Notorious RBG stands for Ruth Bader Ginsburg. She, if you've seen the recent documentaries, you see that she has a vision for a better future. She's the hardest-working justice on the court. She's willing to take new challenges, she's willing to think outside the box, she's quietly efficient, she's effective in addressing matters at hand without drawing undue attention to herself. I would like to be her.
Thank you. Jennifer.
I would also choose Wonder Woman. Wonder Woman was created as a character in the early forties as one of only three standalone characters. She does have allies, but she is able to stand alone. So that makes me think that Wonder Woman is the kind of individual that understands that she does need help and she does need to work on a team, but she's not afraid to do things by herself. She has the strength of a warrior and at the same time, a compassionate heart. Our modern interpretation of Wonder Woman is a woman that can do many things and do them well. And I don't know if Terry knows this or not, but the notorious RBG is a very big fan of Wonder Woman.
Yes. Thank you, Carmella. I think it stole my, I have read down Wonder Woman. The reason I like to be Wonder Woman is she does a lot of things, she helps a lot of people, she's always there, anyone in distress, and that's what I like to do, I like to help people in town, I like to help kids that are having problems. And that's Wonder Woman, I think it's a picture that a woman is able to do all these things on her own.
Thank you. You're all great scores. Now I have one more question before the closing statements. And I'm going to kind of put these two together because they have to do with outdoors. So, are you in favor of the open space referendum and why or why not? And the second part, what is your opinion of the lake remediation project? And this will be Peter.
I am not in favor of the proposition for open space. And the reason being is if there is a surplus in the open space fund, I think that should actually be returned to taxpayers. There's not very many avenues in which we have the opportunity to return money into lower tax bills. And so if there's surplus in that fund, I think it should be returned. As far as the lake remediation, it looks great. I've been out on the canoe a couple times on the lake. And so as far as I can tell, it looks like it's doing well. I have yet to see the park a little bit move in depth. The trees were very new the last time I saw it. So I'd like to see it growing a little bit better.
Okay. Eric.
I'm not going to address the lake because we've already talked about that before. But regarding the open space trust fund, I am fully in favor of it. I was actually one of the people that have helped author that referendum. And it's, there's not a surplus, there's a manner of collecting money into the trust fund to make sure that we have money available to do the projects that we want to do in our community. We have an open space master plan that we want to implement. And sometimes that takes multiple years in collecting the money. Now, the truthfully is, we have limitations on what the trust fund can currently do. We can acquire land for open space and we can use the open space trust fund to improve that land that was acquired using open space. That is extremely restrictive, it's one of the most restrictive in North Jersey. This referendum would provide the needed flexibility, open up other places like Hurstville Park, Carlow Field, other parts of Lakeside Park for those kinds of improvements that otherwise get funded through our capital funding. So we end up paying for these park improvements anyways and now we're able to use this to leverage that money for grants and other improvements and make our dollars go further.
Thank you. Terry.
When open space was first passed in our borough, we need to thank those who had the vision to protect the space for future generations. And they were also smart in that they limited the scope of the open space. But as we become more proficient and understand the processes better, I do favor that we pass the open space referendum in that it expands some of the uses that we can in fact use the money for. As Eric indicated, currently we're very restricted right now. We can just use it for purchasing open space and maintaining that open space. If we, if we pass the referendum, it allows us to purchase, improve, restore, maintain, and gives us a wider use of that money. For instance, I would like to see us use some of that money to improve our playgrounds.
Thank you. Jennifer.
I am a fan of the open space referendum. I think it's logical. Right now, the way it stands, it's too restrictive and the funds can be used for only limited purposes. By allowing us, if we increase, we expand the opportunities that we have for improvements, I think the voters need to be aware of that and they need to understand what that means so that they fully understand what they're looking at when they see that question. As far as the waterfront, I think it looks beautiful. And I think if we have the opportunity to create more beautiful spaces like that through this referendum, then I'm all for it.
Carmella.
Yes. I'm against the referendum, simply because I just like to see that funds be used just for the lands that we own or that we bought, not for any other programs. It's simply just that, the lands that we own, the open space, to improve them. I am definitely for that. And I think we have enough tax, taken out of our tax bills to represent that and have enough money to do whatever we're doing. I don't know if, they're not explaining what they really want to do with it and I don't see that explanation anywhere that I can say, okay, I'm voting for it.
Randall.
Yeah, I've been on the open space committee for a few years now. And no, I don't agree with it either. I think that the money should stay where it is, used primarily for properties that were bought with open space funds and use the money to improve those properties. To have X amount of dollars taken out of that fund to be used anywhere in the town for any other project that they want to do, I just don't agree with it. So I would vote against that. As far as the lake and restoration of the, yeah, I mean, the Chemours have done a nice job on that. I was talking to the wetlands management official who did all the plantings there and I was asking him about maintenance. It looks beautiful now. But the maintenance of that after five years is going to fall to the DPW. And with all the plantings that they did there, I would look to the bigger scope of things that is going to be a problem.
Yeah, two things. First of all, I really do respect Millie and Randy's opinion about the open space trust fund. So when we wrote that, we wanted to make sure that we were protective of the original intent of the open space trust fund while balancing the expanded needs of our community. And one of those things obviously could be exactly what Randy's talking about with addressing some of the long-term issues related to the trees on, at the Rotary Park there. I mean, that is something that we couldn't otherwise use the current open space trust fund to address. And now if this referendum passes in November, we were able to do that, we were able to add new open space for playgrounds. We've ultimately ran out of properties to purchase using open space because they've been purchased using green acres and blue acres based on severe repetitive flooding. So the limitations on the open space trust fund are more than just paper.
We're running out of time. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. And now what we're going to do is we're going to have the closing statements, two minutes each. And we're going to start with Peter.
I'm going to preface my ending closing statements. Jennifer and I are running against each other directly. And she is new to the council and I have not been on the council. The act of being on the council puts you in front of more information directly and consistently. So the amount of times that both her and I tonight may have deferred to others or may not have had exact knowledge on issues is greatly reduced by the act of being on the council. I truly believe that we need diversity on this council. Being strictly owned by one party is detrimental. Actually, I'm going to read my closing statement then. "I'd like to conclude by thanking everyone involved again for their participation, administration, dedication, and illumination. Pompton Lakes gets better with the meeting of the minds, keeping options open and enough competition to keep everyone on their toes. Complacency and comfort makes the conditions ripe for patronage of party politicians. I've seen it, participated in it, fought against it, and made strategic compromises that enabled progress. My focus will always be in finding synergies to enable better returns for less resources, to bring town decisions to the residents, especially when a particular group is affected by their outcome, not only to rely on suburban trends and bulletin board postings regarding legislation." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Randy, you're next. Randall.
Randy, you're welcome. Thank you very much to the League of Women Voters who organized tonight's debate. Thank you to Millie for her years of experience and thank you to Peter for his energy and new ideas. Thank you to the Republican candidates who joined me tonight to help voters of Pompton Lakes make an informed choice on November 6th. I said earlier that Pompton Lakes is a gem of a town. As a carpenter, as a Rutgers environmental stewardship course graduate, as a Passaic County master gardener, I respect the efforts that go into planning and building to enhance the visual aspects of our town. But we need to maintain buildings and properties to ensure the continued beauty of Pompton Lakes. As I walk the streets of our town, I'm concerned with the safety of our sidewalks and the parks, especially for our children and senior citizens. We need to be vigilant about maintaining the quality of life in our town. I have great respect for the DPW and believe that departments should be treated with respect and provided with the necessary equipment to do their job. Two years ago, I asked for a bucket drop to help our Shetree Commission with trimming trees essential to the beauty and safety of our neighborhood. Our commission is still waiting. My experience as a union leader, my passion for the environment, and my willingness to listen and learn are the driving forces behind my decision to run for a seat on our Borough Council. Your vote will help all our voices to be heard. This town needs a new voice and I am the voice. Ride the blue wave. Vote Row A on November 6th.
Thank you. Jennifer.
First, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this debate tonight and especially you, Tony, for being such an amazing moderator. I want to thank our audience here and watching on television for joining us tonight and for all the candidates who are participating. My closing remarks, for my closing remarks, I'm going to tell you a story. I took my daughter for a college tour up north last year and she had the varsity jacket on. And we were out in public and we heard a woman shout from a distance, "Hey, Pompton." And we turned and this woman apparently walked over to us and introduced herself and went on the teleset. It had been many, many years since she had moved out of the state, but she very proudly remarked, "Once you're Pompton, you're always Pompton." That statement really resonated with me because it exemplifies the reason why I've chosen to stay here and raise my family here. Today, my children play with the children of people that I knew when I was their age and there is something very, very special about that. I may be new to politics in this town, but I am not new to this town. And no one will ever be able to say that I showed up or volunteered for anything simply because I was running for position. Regardless of where the chips fall on election day, I will continue to remain a part of this community and volunteer in any way that I can. So thank you.
Thank you. Terry.
I want to thank all the people that helped make this evening a success, the League of Women Voters, the audience members, and of course, my fellow candidates. I would be remiss in not thanking my husband, Dr. Oscar Riker, who has been so supportive in my serving as a councilwoman. I am pleased to have had the opportunity to share my answers and our council's accomplishments. As you have heard this evening, there's a lot of good in Pompton Lakes. Just to name a few accomplishments, during our tenure, we have modernized our technology, implemented significant hazard mitigation program, facilitated the lake remediation program, enhanced the borough's public safety, and achieved an outstanding CRS rating. But there is still a lot that this team wants to accomplish. There are projects that have begun that we would like to see through completion. We really want to finish the good work we started. We understand that it is a privilege to serve the borough. We are anxious to deal with your concerns. Continue to stabilize our taxes, revitalize the downtown through redevelopment, minimizing impact of flooding, improve our recreational facilities, modernize amenities for the seniors, and address the issues involving DuPont Chemours. Our town's future is of the utmost importance to all of us. I want to thank you for having had the faith in my judgment and skills to elect me nine years ago. Now I am asking you to renew that confidence in my abilities and vote for me again. Please vote Terry Riker, Eric Delain, and Jennifer Pollardori for council. Vote Row A, the accomplished team for Pompton Lakes. Thank you for participating in this evening. I hope you have found it informative and enlightening.
Thank you, Terry. Millie?
Yes. Thank you all for listening tonight. When elected to council, I'll work hard to attract the proper ratables that will truly help stabilize our town taxes. I will bring new ideas to the business district and more importantly, entice them to stay. A new voice is needed for the balance and fresh ideas. As president at the Pompton Lakes Southern Age Club, I offer my service to help find a new bright location for seniors and other communal events. We need a location that will accommodate sixty to a hundred people and have ample parking for residents. The DPW building was never maintained and now is in despair. In its current state, it is not a home of pride for employees and nothing is being done for those who work so hard to keep our town clean and beautiful. I thank you for the opportunity to share my ideas with you and hope you will consider voting for Randy, Millie, and Peter on November 6th, Row A.
Thank you. Last but not least, Eric.
Let me begin by thanking the League of Women Voters for tonight's forum, my running mates and opponents for a meaningful conversation, and the audience for coming tonight. I want to recognize and thank all of the hardworking borough employees and volunteers. Our community would not be what it is without your efforts. Most of all, I want to thank my wife and family who have supported me the last three years and who continue to support me as I seek another council term. You've heard our ideas of our vision for Pompton Lakes. We're in changing times and we must be aggressive in addressing the issues that face us now and those that we will face in the future. But we must also balance it with practicality and realism. Terry, Jennifer, and I will continue to do that. We have shown leadership in bringing private investment to our downtown. We support redevelopment, not just in concept, but in practice. We've had the vision to improve our open space and recreation for our residents, for children and seniors alike. We've had the practicality of our resources towards our rivers to mitigate the impact of potential flooding. We know the job is never done and must always be diligent. We've done all this and more while maintaining or expanding services and while being responsible stewards of our tax dollars. Three years ago, you showed your faith that my good ideas and vision for Pompton Lakes was the right one. I believe I have honored that trust and I'm dedicated to making Pompton Lakes a great place to live, work, and play. On Tuesday, November 6th, I'm asking you to once again for Row A, for Terry Riker, Eric Delain, and Jen Pollardori. Thank you all and have a great night.
Thank you very much and good luck and congratulations for coming here tonight and sharing all of your thoughts with everyone. Really appreciate it. Thank you. Let's give them a hand.
She has come here every year for the last ten years. Tony? Tony, ladies, we really appreciate everything that you do for Pompton Lakes. On November 6th, we're going to be asked to vote on one public question. It's entitled "Securing Our Children's Future Bond Act." The New Jersey League of Women Voters has provided us with an interpretive statement and background information in preparation for the election. We have a few copies over here on the resource table, but you can also go on leagueofwomensvotersnj.org and review it yourself. There's many, many resources on the New Jersey League of Women Voters website, and we hope you'll go and study it before November 6th. Thank you very, very much for participating, and thank you, and good night.